Mr. Kaczynski.
Yeah.
Mr. Esposito. Mr. Emma. Mrs. Gottstein. Mr. Castle Grant. Mr. Bella.
We have two applications tonight. One is an informal application. First application is number 2308, Colleen Tristofsky, 25 Eisenhower Drive.
Evening. Close.
Close.
Tripochesky.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
There's so many sounds. Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh huh.
Okay. Wrong words, tell us what we'd like to do.
Uh, okay, well, we have a small lot in, uh, several over here on Eisenhower Drive and, yep, my name is Brian Wetstein. Right, the, I'm her husband. Um, also, the, uh, anyway, we have 25 Eisenhower Drive. Yeah, we have a small property and four children. So we put up a pool. We didn't realize that it needed to be so far from the fence. They don't actually have that kind of space in the yard. We had, an addition was put on the house a long time ago, plus we have a two-car garage in the back. Um, she's been, actually been, her family's been in the house since it's new in 56. So we just, we just don't have the room. So we're asking that, will you allow us to keep the pool up? Also, the shed that's in the back. That's what we're applying for, to, to, uh, fights five variances. Two items. Pool shed, and I think it's the coverage percentage also. It is. Yeah, 50 feet.
Okay.
I have a. I'm good.
Oh. The proposed shed encroaches side yard setback minimum by the two is proposed. Oh, shed encroaches rear setback. Lot for proposed. Those pool encroaches pool to principal building setback 10 feet minimum and three feet proposed. Proposed pool encroaches side yard setback 10 feet minimum, three feet proposed. And proposed eight foot by 10 foot shed exceeds maximum building lot coverage. 100% maximum 31.
That sounds like a lot for shit. Eight by 10. We do.
Always ask this. What's the shed used for?
It's just for toy, just kids' toys.
Yeah.
It's really all.
Currently holding bikes.
Bikes and it's just toys.
Power wheels.
Not going to be used for business.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's not, not big enough for that. No.
No.
No. Just a shed.
Yes.
Get that on the record. Any other members have a comment? Like, we're going just, just because of the, you know.
Hmm. We, we do. We do.
Absolutely.
Yep. So there's a, right now, there's a deck on the pool that we're also applying for. So I'm going to apply for all the permits we, we didn't prior to, but there's a deck with a closing gate on it, yes.
And auto, and, uh, and we keep a, a lock on it.
Six feet. Yeah, we have six feet. So we have a, a dog ear fence, a wooden fence all the way around the three sides and a chain link across our driveway. Yes.
Or, yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's the name of the company it's in.
No.
The name is under, um, it's in trust to my grandparents, in my family. Um, Palmer.
Her grandparents passed and left her the house and it's still, currently still in trust, so.
We're going to also get to the public. The practice on the public want to comment on this application. Please come forward. Secret from the public. Close. Second.
Second. Mr. Kaczynski.
Yeah.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant.
Yeah.
Mrs. Gottstein. Mr. Bella.
Thank you. For your pool. Thank you. We do.
We're going to go up and get the.
Yep, we, we started the permits already. Now we just need this to, to finish the process, yep. Okay. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got it. Good night.
Is that me? It's on.
Okay, our next case is an informal case. It's assigned the number 2313, CNW Infinity on Route 9. Now, this is an informal application. They didn't have to do notice. We're not going to swear anyone in. The members are not obliged to make a comment. And if they do make a comment, they're not going to be held to that if the case ever comes before us formally. They're just here to see if there's any issues that they can resolve, uh, before they submit their formal application. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Michael Page. I represent the applicant CNW Infinity LLC, uh, of which, uh, Ms. Chris Toa is the principal. And she's here, uh, as, uh, she just stood up before you, uh, for this evening. Uh, first and foremost, my client wishes to thank the board for your careful consideration of this informal, um, application. Uh, the reason for this is my client is of limited financial means at this time and we just want to get a better, better feedback from you as to the feasibility of the application before she goes and spends more money on hiring a professional engineer or architect or professional planner to bring a, a formal application before the board. My client is fully aware that, um, anything that, that happens this evening, discussions are not binding on either the board or on, on the applicant. And like I said, we're just trying to get a better assessment of whether she should move forward with the application or whether there's any major roadblocks that you may see that, that we don't in this regard. Uh, so with that being said, um, uh, my client has tried to provide as much information as she could with regard to this. Uh, submitted a, a copy of a prior plan, which kind of shows a survey of the property or an overlay where the building is situated, showing the parking. Another diagram shows the second floor of the building, um, as it's now situated with office space. So currently there's, there is a, a two-story building on the property. Uh, it houses a liquor store on the first floor, um, and the entire second floor is office space. Um, and basically what my client is looking to do is to reconfigure that office space on the second floor and make it two residential apartments. The reason for this is basically financial. We all know that the pandemic has changed the way businesses run. Um, there's a lot of businesses that don't need office space anymore, run by home or run remotely. So my client is feeling the brunt of that, um, and just feels that it, it may be better situation for her to be able to rent the, it out as two apartments. Um, the total square footage, I think, is around 20, 2758, I think, if it was, um, for the, the total top floor. Um, and to make it, uh, two residential apartments. She's also included, included photos of, of the building. I believe it's, it's a very nice looking building, well-maintained. Um, and, um, so there's, uh, I think 19 photos that she submitted, as well as, um, there was a Google Maps, um, kind of showing where the property, which is 980, uh, US Highway 9, I forgot to mention that, but showing the location of the property and then showing along Route 9, there are some other, um, businesses with residences included with them or other residences that are located, uh, in close proximity to this, uh, property as well. So, um, again, we're, we're here just to try to get the board's view or the members' view, looking at this just to get an honest opinion and some feedback, um, as to whether the board thinks that this would be, um, a favorable application or not. We just want an honest assessment, um, so that my client can make a decision whether to move forward with it in a, in a formal application. So if, if the board has any questions of me, um, or, uh, my client, I'd be simply happy to, uh, answer those things, um, to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you. You said there's a liquor store on the ground floor.
On the ground floor.
First floor. And offices up top, what, what was, what were in the offices before?
Well, the, it was always office. Uh, from my understanding, the whole nature of the building was office space. My client came before the board back in 2017 and got, um, a variance to put the liquor store in on the first floor. Um, I think even at that time, it was difficult for them to rent out the entire building as office space. Um, so that was the purpose for bringing the liquor store. Um, and now they're having more difficulty with the renting out the top floor as well. So, um, it's the, the whole top floor is office space, but right now it's half vacant. Um, and right now, the people that they have in there as well, um, those people were renting, I believe, the whole, uh, top floor. They cut it down to half and now they're, they're no longer under a lease. It's month to month, so they are not looking to stay. So my client is faced with the prospect, if they do leave, then how does she continue to maintain that building with just a liquor store on the bottom floor and not having anything else rented out, just vacant, vacant space above?
What is, how is it zoned? Commercial?
Yeah, it's B3, uh, business zone.
Residents are not allowed?
No, no, that's why we would need a use variance from, from the board, uh, in order to do that. But, um, I, I, I don't know. I think, uh, and that Google's Maps, there's, there's a couple of places where I think there's, um, a, a business, uh, a little further, maybe down, uh, south, but on the opposite side, um, that has a business and residence is above it. You'll see that oftentimes in even in a highly congested, I guess, uh, residential or business area where you have a bar and you'll have apartments above it. So this is kind of the same thing, but it's not a bar, it's just a liquor store. So it's, you know, just like a retail establishment. But, uh, I guess there's plenty of office space to make two pretty good sized apartments, uh, because like I said, the square footage is 2758, I think. And, uh, so you divide that in half, it's about 1,300, a little bit more square feet for each.
Two-bedroom apartment?
I believe that's the plan, to have a two-bedroom apartment for each of those, yes.
Adequate parking?
Yeah, right now.
How many, we're going to need probably four spaces?
Mr. Chairman, I can add some general observations, so when you're.
Go ahead, Jay.
Like, just for the board's information, I had the question about the number of apartments, I mean, the number of bedrooms. So that means you needed four additional spaces that would be just for the apartments. You have, based on the Plan 25, based on the first floor liquor store, you need 14, so you should have sufficient parking. The layout of the parking doesn't comply with a lot of the ordinance requirements for layout, but a lot of it's pre-existing. So you, you would need design waivers, but that is pre-existing. Uh, the plan shows an encroachment of your existing driveway onto the adjacent property. I don't know if that's permitted or if it's just an encroachment, so that's something you may have to go through and take a look at because from the building to the property line is only 12 and a half feet, which isn't really sufficient for a driveway. You're showing a large area that's another 25 feet on the adjacent property. So that's something that would need to be clarified, whether you have an easement for that. It says existing right-of-way, but I don't know that there's an easement to allow that on the adjacent property. So that's something to be aware of.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
Uh.
North or south? On the Dairy Queen side, uh, which would be a south, south side, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask my client or inquire further about that because these were, these, the, the copies of the drawings that you do have are from the plans that were submitted back in 2017. So I'm assuming that they, they have the authority or, uh, but I could certainly find that out for.
If you came back with a formal application, those questions would be raised, so just, just kind of giving a heads up about that.
Appreciate it.
The ordinance calls for a 50-foot buffer when you have commercial next to residential. The resi, there's a residential development behind this property. Pre-existing, you don't have that 50-foot buffer. So, yeah, just, again, for the board's information, it doesn't exist now, it is required, so you have to be prepared to address that.
Is there a fence behind that divides the residential and the business?
Yeah, I believe there's a fence, and I think from that drawing, you'll see that the fence, actually, the macadam goes up to the fence and then there's, there's green behind the fence, so the property line is actually beyond the fence.
Actually shows the fence of the residence behind you encroaching onto your property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's your fence and you have more property behind it, but I'm assuming it's the residence and they're kind of using a portion of your property.
Right. Okay.
Do you know how much that is, Jay? Is it 10 feet or just a?
Uh, no, it varies. It's, it's probably, you know, 10, 15 feet.
That's quite a bit.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, in addition, uh, the aisle width are, has pretty ordinance requirements. So again, those are issues you'd have to address if you came back for a site plan. Uh, you would have to designate certain spots specifically for the residential, but you appear to have plenty of parking, so that shouldn't be an issue. Uh, there, there's no site landscaping in the parking lot area. A lot of times when applications come before you with existing site plans that don't address your landscaping requirements, you try to get the site cleaned up, so that, that also may be an issue. It's, it's basically all macadam around the, in front and around the building.
Right, right.
Those are issues. Uh, access into the apartments, you'd have to address that on the plan. I don't know if it would be through with the liquor store, if you're going to have, create an outside entrance, so you'd have to.
Yeah. I, I, I think the plans show, eh, just when you're looking at even the, the second floor as it exists now, kind of hand-drawn in with the offices and such, there are stairways on either side. I think there's a back stairway and a.
The one is one stair, uh, stairway and then the other one is on the side. So we already have two entrances going to upstairs.
There's already two entrances.
The concern would be the outside of the building or internal?
Is it from the outside door, then go right up the stairs?
The stair is inside. Both of them is inside of the building.
The stairs are on the inside?
Yeah.
Right, but the entrance to the stairs, you don't have to go through the liquor store, do you?
No.
Okay.
The concern would be, how do you get safe access from wherever you're going to enter the apartments to wherever the parking places are?
Yes.
That's something else we'll look at. And the ordinance calls for a certain size loading zone. What you have here doesn't comply with the ordinance, but again, that's, that's a pre-existing condition. So, it's a lot of issues with the existing site layout that the, the board may have some concerns with if you come back with a formal site plan.
Sure, and, and, uh, yeah, we can address all of those things. I could try to find out from the, the prior, um, professionals that put together the application for the liquor store, what was there? What was, maybe we can get a copy of the, the approval from 2017 to take a look at as well.
I don't think there was a site plan. It may have just been a use variance to make the conversions. I, I don't recall dealing with this issue, but I can check further in the files, not a, you're mentioning 2017, I can see if I have anything else.
Okay. Appreciate it.
How many, how many spaces do they have, Jay?
They're showing 25, but a lot of them aren't conforming. They, they're, they're calling, I guess, compact car areas that are adjacent to the building that you don't really have proper circulation for, so. But they couldn't go through and, and address that and still have sufficient parking.
How many would they need?
They would need 14 for the liquor store. It's 5,000, uh, five spaces per thousand square feet, so it's roughly 2750. So they'd need 14 for the liquor store and then if they're two-bedroom apartments, it's two each. So they'd need a total of, of 18 and they've got 25.
So they have some room to play with to make some improvements?
Right. If they have to lose some spaces to improve the circulation, they may be able to do that.
Well, they've got that 15 feet in the back. Can they, can they reclaim that? If that's their property?
They could, but technically you're supposed to have 50 foot, so they, they shouldn't be using it anyway, but, but that's an option if they wanted to reclaim it, they, they could do that. What are the hours at a liquor store?
The hours of the liquor store.
I'm sorry?
The hours of the liquor store.
Uh, wait now, it's 9:30 to 8:00 club on Monday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday up to 9:00 club. Sunday closes at 7.
Any other members have a comment? Question?
I'm just have a couple of quick.
Okay, John.
Observations, um, with, we say about 2,700 square feet of floor area on the second floor. That's a, that, that would be pretty sizable apartments, um, and I would imagine with the configurations I see today, that three bedrooms could be likely. So we just want to keep that in mind. Doesn't really impact the parking. Those would be very spacious two-bedroom apartments. And, um, just from a marketing standpoint, I, the three bedrooms may be more viable in that square footage. As far as that backyard area goes, the area between the fence, behind the fence, um, if they are larger units where there may be more likely to be families, it might be nice to create an out, or, or not, just might be nice to create an outdoor space for the residential units. This is highway frontage, there's nothing really within walking distance. The rest of the lot's pretty, uh, unusable for any kind of recreational purposes with the liquor store operation. So having something in that backyard, if there's a possibility, that might be a nice, uh, amenity for the residential tenants. And, uh, otherwise, I think I would just, I did. You may run into some challenges laying out floor plans considering where the stairs are today, but that'll be for an architect to figure out, so. Let's see, if you, if you come back, what you come back with.
So you're not going to change the building, the, the size of the building will remain the same?
Yeah, I don't, uh, she doesn't have any, um, any app, any intention to change the structure.
I don't think you need to.
Just to reconfigure that second floor, um, and make it a two-apartment.
Nothing done to the exterior, that will remain the same also?
Uh, that, that would be, remain the same as well, yeah.
Are you considering three-bedroom? Or is it definitely two?
It really, like, depends on, like, all of you, like, you know, we, we don't have any, like, decision, like, but I'm thinking there may be two back rooms, so make the space bigger, it's better for the, wasn't that, like, the people who live there?
Yeah.
You know?
Agreed. Okay.
So, uh, if, like, all of you say three back room, it's fine, we can make three back room. It is not a problem for us.
If it is three bedrooms, does that do anything in terms of, uh?
Mr. Chairman, parking is.
Vehicles.
Two apartments, it's two spaces, for three, it's 2.1, so it's really no, no change as far as parking goes. Cause I think the concerns would be, uh, access, you have three bedrooms, it's the same concerns about circulation, providing safe access to the parking, where you're, as, as, as the planner indicated, where your stairs are going to be located, how you're going to get from the parking to the stairs, those type of things.
Okay.
So, so from a, from a practical standpoint, with this kind of floor plate, with the depth and the width of it, it's basically a square. Unless, you're probably going to end up with a certain number of rooms that don't have access to windows. And when you're in an office, you're kind of in the middle of it, doesn't really matter so much, you have the open floor plan with the cubicles. So designing it so that the more, more of the common spaces are internal and then bedrooms along the outside is probably where it has to go for, um, code compliance. So it'll be a challenge for an architect to figure out and we'll have to see if they come back, what kind of floor plan it is and if it's two bedrooms plus a den, which, you know, may not have a window, but could be used as a sleeping room potentially in practice. So we just want to, you know, we'll have to look at that, what's too, too soon to tell, but it, it may be a challenge for the, for the site.
And the only way, and the, the reason it would concern us is just for the extra little parking? I mean, usually we're not that concerned with inside the building.
I, I think this is a unique situation, just because it is a use variance and the building wasn't necessarily built with residential in mind originally, so we just want to make sure that the layouts make sense for the suitability of the site. So I think that's, that's where it comes in, where we wouldn't normally care how somebody orients their house, but we just want to make sure that we're not creating any kind of unsafe or, you know, unsanitary kind of conditions.
So because it's, as he just said, because it's a use, we might be looking inside where normally we wouldn't look that closely at it.
Sure, no, yeah, I mean, yeah, and.
And also, since it's over a liquor store and that type of thing.
Right, yeah, no, and, and believe me, my client appreciates all the feedback because she wants to, you know, gather all this information together and then, you know, kind of mull it all over and it, you know, really looking just, if, if this is something that, um, could be worked out, obviously, the, the architect or the engineer and, and, and such would have to put together a good plan that would make it attractive to whoever would want to rent it, um, and make it to work for you guys as well because obviously it's not a residential, uh, zoned, uh, place. So, um, if, if it, if it can be made to work that way, you know, uh, you know, that's what we're looking for, to see if, if the board is, or if, is the board dead set against, say, it's not residential, don't even come here. You know, but if we can make that transition and make it appealable, uh, to the board and, and to any prospective tenants, that's what we're, we're looking to do, if that's a possibility.
Sewer and water, Jay, any concerns?
Be an issue, it's minimal increase with residential. If you compare it to office, it's, you, it's probably not an issue.
All right, any other members want to make a comment or ask a question? So normally what we do at this time, and again, you're not obligated to do it, but if you want to make a comment, like, I, I'm not in favor of it or I see problems or that it looks like it's a feasible idea, uh, you can, uh, make that comment, but you don't have to. So as far as I'm concerned, it looks like a reasonable situation, since you're not expanding the building and there's adequate parking. As long as in, in ti, inside the building, it's safe, uh, and you meet some of the other requirements, uh, it's, it sounds like it might be, you know, it's possible that we could grant the, grant the application. That's my opinion right now.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else want to say anything?
I agree as well.
Okay. Well, that, thank you, thank you very much for, for your attention and for your feedback on this, it's greatly appreciated. And, uh, certainly my client will take that into consideration, hopefully we'll, we'll be back before you soon. All right, thank you very.
Luck.
Very much again, thank you.
Good night.
Yeah.
All right, so we've, uh, we've done the two applications this evening. Uh, right now, I'm going to open it to the public for general comments. Anybody want to make a general comment, not concerning any of the applications, please come forward. Not seeing anybody, the public portion is closed. We have four resolutions to approve from, that we couldn't do last time, right, John? Do you want to announce those and, uh, just the number and the name, if you could?
First one, resolution, Michael and Kathleen Mo, 52 Merritt Avenue, case number ZBA 23-03.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve or? Okay, can I have a motion to approve or disapprove this? Memorialization?
Motion to approve.
Second, okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma? Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Okay, the second one.
Resolution, Levana. Oldisar, sixty Jensen Road, case number Z B A twenty three dash five.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant? Mrs. Gottstein?
Third one? Resolution, Gavin Enni, Ramakrishna, for law court, case number Z B A twenty three dash oh six.
Rest, uh, motion please?
Motion to approve. Again.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Number four.
Joe DeRoe, ninety six North Edward Street, case number Z B A twenty three dash oh nine.
Motion please?
Motion to approve? Second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Uh, I do have a resolution here written up already.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you board, pass it out and, and, uh. Like the reason John prepared this ahead of time is because they were here last month and we, uh, didn't have a meeting, so. They were delayed by a month, so John graciously, uh, wrote up. Memorialization, assuming that, uh, the case would go the way it did. So you can peruse that for a while.
Uh, there is only one change in paragraph three on the first, uh. Page, it's gonna be the applicant Colleen and Brian testified.
Okay.
I had only Colleen as doing it, but Brian joined in, so I will correct that and have that over to you tomorrow, uh, Joan.
Okay, and Joan, you have resolutions for, for the, uh, business reorganization meeting? Okay. So there's one for each of the votes, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um. What we'd like to do, this is from our reorganization meeting when chairman, vice chairman and the planner and. Secretary and everything was voted on, there's a resolution for each one of those. And what I'd like to do is bundle them together and just vote once. So it's, uh, for the chairman, vice chairman, board secretary and recording secretary in one. Engineer, planner and attorney and the schedule for the year. So could I have a resolution to approve all of those? Can I have a motion to approve all of those resolutions? Yes, second? Okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
We have, uh, minutes from the March twenty second meeting. Both from the reorganization meeting and from the, uh, regular zoning board meeting. Can I have a motion to approve both of those?
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? I don't think we need a roll call on that. And, uh. So now if you've had the time to look over this latest one. Since you're all speed readers, can I have a motion to approve, uh, the one we did tonight?
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
That's fair, right?
I have one question.
Okay.
Um. We did, we did the informal tonight and I was told that there have been informals done in the past. Uh. The statute is not quite clear, uh, as to informals. Usually they're before the planning board and not the zoning board. Uh, your previous attorney said that they should not be before the zoning board. But you have a history of hearing informals. Do you have any objections to continuing to hear informals? I don't know when the last one was. It was years and years ago from what I gather. We can always simply say, no, there, there are no informals and just tell the person, no. Um, or you can allow them to come in. It's up to you. How does the board feel about them?
I know we've had them in the past and. A number of times, uh, you know, there was an application that probably was gonna be a problem and we let the, uh. Applicant, potential applicant, no, and it basically saved them some time and money. I, I think, so, uh, I think it was a benefit in the past. Jay, you want to make any comments? You've been here.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Uh, what you say is, is not binding, but it does provide the applicant some direction as to whether. If they move forward, you're not locked into a yes or no, but. If you tell them right up front that you think there's gonna be issues, they at least know about it before they come before you. So I think that it's helpful to the applicant if they can get some guidance.
Usu- usually it's pretty quick because we don't go through the formalities. And, uh, if he, if, if they're getting a sense one way or the other, they can just kind of end it because they don't have to present their whole case. Uh, so I don't think it's gonna be an extra burden as far as time goes. Anybody else have anything to say?
I, I don't, I don't think I have an issue with it. Uh, but if, if this is something that is. Uh, more towards the planning board and not the zoning board, is there a legal reason why usually you don't have informals in front of the zoning board?
The statute reads, it's under fees and it says if there is an informal in front of the planning board, the planning board should charge this much for fees. It mentions nothing about the zoning board. So from that, the attorney felt that they don't belong here in front of the zoning.
All right, so other than fees?
Yeah, that's.
There is no other legal issue?
What's your opinion, professional?
I had no problem because reasons that the chair.
Yes.
Said, suggested. Um, and let's face it, eh, they are very few and far between.
John, your experience on, with other boards, do zoning boards, do they have informals? Or is it that rare that it's?
It's that rare. When I was here last time, I don't remember a single one.
Okay, how about John? How about you down there?
I was getting ready to respond. I forgot there were two Johns.
I'm sorry.
Um, now I think I could count on one hand the number of informal applications in any venue. Um, I know that. Uh, our previous attorney's opinion was that they should not be before the zoning board. I mean, there's a question of, of law. I guess there's a gray area there. The only caution I would have with the use variance application. Is that if there were an objector to a full application, if they feel they were denied some participation during an informal because they weren't informed about it. I could see there being a potential concern, but that's just. Yeah. May or may not be an issue. I think we, we try and keep it limited. It, it's probably not a big deal.
No one has been noticed because it's not a formal application when then the person would be heard.
I think it's prudent. Saves them a lot of money. We get an idea of what's going on.
It's just a conversation.
Yeah. No, it's okay.
Okay, so, uh. Right, so, well, we will continue them probably. We won't have any, but just they do come up. Just. Joan had an issue because we hadn't been doing them and the person they asked, so, uh, she needed clarification, but. Yeah, yeah, it's not your, you know, your job to make that decision, which is fine.
I mean, is this something we can make, we could make on a case by case basis, or do we really need to like a blanket decision? Where we need to treat all applications the same?
Good question. Usually they'll talk to us ahead of time, like I talked to Mr. Page as to why are you doing this? And, uh. Must seem reasonable enough to do it, so.
So there's no legal issue if she, if, if they come back and they spend all the money on architects, et cetera, and we deny it for whatever reason. There's no issue. They can come back and say, hey, you, you led us astray. Okay.
And he did say that, state that upfront.
Yes, you already did.
Chairman, that's one of the reasons that I said all the things that I did that are potential problems with an application. You can waive. All the issues that I wrote, uh, that I raised in my comments, but technically they are design waivers that are required with new application. So you could go through and use the fact that they don't comply with a lot of the site plan requirements if you want to go through and deny the application.
John, uh, did we do an annual report last year? Were we? I know you might have presented something right at the end of the year and then maybe it got lost with all the confusion.
I think we did, but I'm gonna have to, to double check. I thi- I think, I think it did. It was, it was kind of right under the wire.
I know we discussed it, but I don't know if you actually typed it in.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, it was completed at, maybe it had been, it maybe been in the December meeting.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Um.
Just check that, just in case.
Yeah, well, I'll double check that and we'll get started on the one this year for last year's activity.
Mr. Chairman, one item for the board's information. I, I think you're all familiar with the application on Ernst and Road for the mosque that was submitted to the zoning board. Initially, they required a use variance, which is why they were coming to this board. The applicant went back and revised his plans and he attempted to meet the conditional use requirements via ordinance, which takes it from the zoning board to the planning board. So that went back and forth. Uh, your, your planner agreed that it did meet the conditional use. We sent it to the planning board planner and he confirmed also. So that application is gonna be transferred from the zoning board to the planning board. So you're not gonna have to hear that application.
Is it, is it a different application or is it the same application?
Well, uh, what initially was submitted, they, they made significant modifications. They had encroachments into buffers. Now they have the fifty foot buffer that I mentioned on the prior application. They've added parking underneath the building to try to comply with the parking requirements. So they've made a lot of changes to the, what was originally submitted. To be able to meet the conditional use requirements. And conditional use basically is all the ordinance. So for setbacks, lack coverage, all those requirements they now met, where initially I didn't do that.
Members have anything they want to say before we adjourn? Very thanks for all coming tonight and, uh. Hopefully John will get better and be able to make the next meeting. I know you talked to him and he was.
He was in the hospital.
He was in the hospital.
Just got out, yeah.
So hopefully he'll be better for next meeting. And, uh. There's nothing else? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Seconded?
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? The meeting is adjourned.